Okay, I'd like to call the May 17, 2021 City Council meeting for the City of Lake City to order. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Vice Mayor Mr. Green.
Thank you for the citizens who are gathered here tonight to help improve our community. Father, thank you for our first responders to protect our citizens, our community, and communities all over the world. Father, we hope that tonight our decisions are pleasing in your eye as we look to do what is best for our community. Father, we pray for the safety and security of all of our citizens and all citizens worldwide. Amen.
Ms. Saxby, call the row, please.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Jefferson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Koberlein?
Here.
Mr. Helvemberger?
Here.
Chief Gilmore.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened the public meeting. Since 1968, the city code has prohibited any person from making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks to the coming voters by addressing the city council, yelling or making audible comments with the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct would not be tolerated. There's only one approved manner of addressing the council, that is to be recognized and to speak for the podium. We have a proclamation for Building Safety Month. It's entitled Building Safety Month, May 2, 2021. The City of Lake City is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. Whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to assure the safe destruction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using this international code, they are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization. Our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world. Whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes, which according to FEMA, commissioned study by the National Institute of Building Sciences, provide $11 in future mitigation benefits for every dollar invested. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our committee's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to the American prosperity. Whereas Safer Buildings, Safer Communities, Safer World, the theme for Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2021 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the safety of our built environment and recognizes the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies that save lives and protected homes and businesses. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in their community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. Witt, Mayor of the City of Lake City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our membership to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Mr. Young, if you'll come up. Okay, we're now opening a second public hearing on Corbin Alliday, Vice President of Guardian C R M Inc., Community Development Block Grant Program.
Uh-oh. There it goes. We have had a first public hearing on March 1st, which discussed the eligible activities in C D B G, the program, which is to benefit low and moderate income persons as defined by HUD. We also had a fair housing training on March 1st for points, but then we had coordination with the prospective grant business partner after that, and today we have a draft, application and draft project for you to discuss and consider. This is the second public hearing where we will actually review the project and the application. The scope of the application is approximately $1.5 million in C D B G E D funds being requested for fire suppression, for airport hangar five, to accommodate expansion and job creation by HEICO, who is already located at the airport. The facility is located at U.S. Highway 90, West Lake City, Florida, at the Lake City Gateway Airport. A minimum of 43 full-time equivalent jobs are being pledged by the commercial center, by the expansion. So, and at least 51% of all the jobs created must be low and moderate income persons pre-employment. It would be, it's perfectly fine if there's no low-income per people after they get a new job. But this is for those that are pre-employment income, low to moderate income, but when they come in to apply for a job. And again, we're focused on fire suppression improvements to code in the hangar that HEICO needs to expand. There's one picture of the airport and the hangars. We are partnered with the county. County is looking, is working on Hangar Three. The city is working on Hangar Five. The reason we skipped Hangar Four is it needs structural, many structural improvements because we have a much bigger project. So, but between the city and the county, we can take care of the fire suppression in three, Hangar Three and Hangar Five, and get 43 new jobs for each building. It's another building with the hangars shown on it, and they are not in the floodplain. So that's good. Budget, the C D B G budget, as is proposed, is $120,000 for administration, $160,000 for engineering, and $1.22 million for the fire suppression, fire suppression being the only activity for points that we are submitting for. It will take all of the $1.22 million to upgrade the fire suppression in those buildings. The path from here, application goal was the end of this month, May 31st, or June, we plan to be applying, submitting this application. We have an estimated site visit in July, that probably will be a Zoom meeting, estimated award in September, and then estimated release funds next year, so we can start building, spending money on construction. The process from here that C D B G requires is that now that we open it up to the public, first the public comments on the application, then it comes back to the council for discussion, and then there's an action item later on the agenda, which is the resolution for signatures on all the documents for the application. And with that, I'm here for questions from the public, from the council.
Okay, anybody in the public wish to speak to this C D B G grant application? If you'll come to the podium so they can hear. Give me name for the record so we can have it.
My name is Blondell Johnson, and of course, I'm a citizen's advocate, and I work with housing. I've been doing this for the past 30 years, and housing was C D B G money, but the city has been something that you have not done. It was done, it's only been done twice in the past 30 years. There's always been something or some reason that the city has not applied for housing with the C D B G money. It's always been someone else, or some other agency, or some other funds, or it went some other way. We don't see the reason that the citizens don't need the housing, C D B G housing funds here in the city. You don't drive down the streets and see the housing falling apart? You don't want to keep your residents here? I know I do. I want my children to stay here. They have grown and gone, but when they come back, I do want their neighborhood to be to the point where they want to live next door to their neighbors, and that's where I am now. My children are grown, but they don't want to live there. They don't want to live on the property that their grandmothers and things left. You don't, you never consider housing with the C D B G money? It's always something else with C D B G. That's not a concern, and I bring this before council, year after year, year after year, I do this housing with USDA. I'm constantly doing housing with an agency, with the family, with someone else. It's not a paycheck for me. It's to help our residents here in Columbia County, so that they will want to remain here. They want to stay here because they can see that it looks better. It lives better. No one else feels that way?
Oh, yeah.
No one has any questions? No one sees it?
Ms. Blondell, I was going to ask you to come speak anyway, because I know this is one of your pet peeves, this C D B G. And Mr. Corbett, what do citizens have to do to apply for this assistance?
With C D B G, the city, of course, would run the program, and of course, the Citizens' Advocacy Board would, of course, accept the applications for the housing repairs, since the house is so bad, they tear it down and rebuild it. At that point, the city would be able to rebuild 16 houses or make repairs on that house. The family would own the house, and they could live in it until they die. You don't get the house back, but the family is happy, the taxes they will continue to pay on.
Ms. Corbett, you want to add something to that, or?
If I could, the economic development category does not compete with the regular category, so it does not compete with a housing application. If you wanted to do a housing application, that's a whole separate process.
So that's what it doesn't care with us doing a housing application?
It would not. It would not. Now, you have, I believe you have a commercial revitalization application, and that would. So that was the category, that was the regular category option that the city.
Well, that one's complete.
It was commercial revitalization. You could have done housing, but this grant is separate from the regular category and does not compete, so you could have both. This would not prevent you from doing housing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
So, the competing C D B G grant was the one that the city applied for last year for Wilson Park. So until that's complete, there can't be an application for affordable housing. So hopefully that thing will get completed pretty quick, because this is 2019 still, and I believe we could still apply if the other one's completed for the 2019, I believe it is.
And I think that's what we said at that time, as soon as we could get that one complete, we would apply for a housing grant.
That's fantastic, because I have been looking at and still assisting residents of the entire Columbia County with applicants for USDA rural development repairs, and actually for housing.
But I think that's what we did say at that time, when we did that, is that the next application in that category would be for the housing.
Well, I will definitely be looking forward to that, because our board of directors has come forth, and they are ready to go.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, it's not exactly C B, C D B G, but I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Johnson also is aware, and maybe she can help us get the word out. I know that we have waived tap and impact fees for developers who are building affordable housing, so we permanently waive those tap and impact fees. And then also, I believe that we have a process right now where we're putting our excess properties, city-owned properties up for bid at auction, and those funds that we receive on those auction bids are going to also be tied directly to affordable housing as well. So that's separate from the grant, and I believe that we did commit to, when we have, the next opportunity comes up, that we were doing that for affordable housing too. So it's not just the C D B G, but we are, we see the, I see the need, and so we're trying to work as best we can.
Well, I was definitely glad to work towards and work with the council in meeting that goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, did you raise your hand? And you got somebody on the line? Okay, I'll get them next, after Mr. Warren.
So, that's the one. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that Ms. Johnson came. We don't always see eye to eye, but we definitely agree, and have agreed for a long time, the importance of housing throughout the community in which we live, and I'm quite sure in other communities. What's very disturbing with me is that I fought with most of this council for years, even proposed a half a million of my own personal money to do affordable housing, and you checked off on that because I verified the funds with you. And it has been one of the things that has been least prioritized. When you talk about the C D B G grant that could have been used for affordable housing, Lester McCullum and his wife Anne, along with a city employee, decided it was best to use that money to put a fountain, a $750,000 water fountain into the Soto Lake, instead of using on housing. And I raised sand about that, and I still feel there's a conflict of interest to have people that sat on that board to vote for something like that, and the city has given them almost $100,000 in money to build apartments. And so, and Ms. Blondell is right, it has not been the amount of attention for affordable housing that it should be from the council, because if I think of affordable housing was as damaged as it is in other communities, as it is in the communities in which her and I live in, that it would have been more of a priority. That's just my opinion, Mayor. And it's outright frustrating, and to keep pushing people, it seems, it seems in my community, I live in 10, she lives in 12. It is people who call, I'm quite sure her, every day, and me, many times a day, about needing serious repairs. These are citizens, I mean, senior citizens. Two people in this world we should care about, kids and the elderly, and we should prioritize them. And it's just, I just don't know what to say, Mayor. How do we get to this point? And we've just, we've put it to the back burner. Now, I do know that $5 million worth of COVID money is coming to this town, to Lake City, and I would hope and pray that the council be willing to carve out the amount of money they spent on putting that fountain in the lake, to carve it back out from the COVID money, to put it back in the community for seniors. Thank you.
Okay. Is there somebody on the line?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Biden?
Yeah, just going there about him. I just wanted to follow up, not follow up, but just to agree with Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Warren's comment. I think that it's a matter of priorities. I mean, this grant application is already out of the box, train and lift station, I get that. But I think going forward, and you indicated that at the meeting when you all decided to apply for this particular grant and the next grant going to be housing, I hope that the council stick to that, because it's really a matter of priorities. And I want to say this, economic development is a good thing, but economic development for some people that don't have a job, they live in bed, the houses dilapidated, almost unfit to live in, they don't feel that. And, you know, I'm disappointed, just like Mr. Warren and Ms. Johnson are, but I think it's just a matter of priority. It's, okay, what are we going to do going forward? Now, you all said at the meeting that the next application is going to be housing, here. And I understand that this is not the same type of application, it's not the same thing, but it's a real problem when you see economic development at the top, and you ride around precinct 10, and ride around precinct 12, and see some houses that's been there forever, wood frame, almost about to fall down, and anybody who ride up and down those streets would know that we have a real need for housing. And I just hope and pray that as the council move forward, that you keep in mind that there was an offer put on the table by Mr. Warren, and I was at the meeting, I'm disappointed in that, not follow up with that. And I know that Ms. Johnson's been involved with houses for, even when she worked for the city years ago. That's one of her pet peeves. And how people live got something to do with how they behave. And improve people living conditions, I think you improve their behavior, and that's just my opinion. But thank you, Mayor. Before I hang up, Mayor, I do want to thank the council for hosting the two workshops on the police, Assistant Review Board, and I hope that you all will move exponentially in terms of trying to set that up. And on the record, you know, I support a Assistant Review Board, not an Advisory Board, because it's something in the name, you know, advise is one thing, but review, there's a definition between review and advise is different. And so I think that what this community need actually is a Assistant Review Board. Thanks for taking the time, Mayor, to talk to me. I wish I could have been there today, but didn't feel like, when you retire, I didn't feel like getting up, coming down. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, he's, I think, Mr. Leakers is going to speak, and then, yeah.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Stan.
Thank you very much. Is there a reason that the screen isn't on there, so you can see who's attending the meeting, is the operator not know how to do that, to put the screen of the meeting on there, the way it's always been, so you can see who's attending the meeting?
I had news.
I mean, I don't know, it seems we're going backwards in time in Lake City these days. Usually the meeting's up there, and you can see who's attending the meeting, and you got an agenda. Lake City's going backwards, backwards in time. So if you look at this, and this is part of the issue with the public hearing, because the public could comment, you have Lake City on, you may have another Lake City on, you have the police department on, you have Terry Phillips on, that's the city, and you have Tony's boss. Maybe that's why that meeting's not up there, because as this city council disenfranchises the residents of Lake City and the surrounding areas, is that you don't want people to see who's attending the meetings, or even come. But this is a community development block grant hearing, which is required by law. Economic development is different than housing or any other issues that you may be able to apply for. But I'm a little confused, apparently the public's a little confused. You didn't have a chance, if I understand it right, to apply for any other community development block grant now, except the economic development block grant. Isn't that right? Because the other one's not closed down. Now, small cities, is that part of this program? That's part of economic development?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if the public knew what was going on, as well as the city council, got this explained. So there's two levels of grants, and the housing grant can be for a lot of things. It can be not only for ripping housing down and building new houses or lot clearance, it can be for residential rehabilitation, which if you get $750,000, which I guess is the maximum on this now, it's been that way for a while, you could get a lot of people to apply. You could have a thing where you just want to weatherproof houses and install windows. So you could put in new windows in people's houses, which could benefit a lot of people, other than doing, building new houses or ripping down houses, and get a lot of programs going at once. You could work with Mr. Warren with affordable housing, which could go hand in hand with community development, community development block grant grants. But the city council doesn't know how to work with anybody, because if you put this on the screen, which I guess maybe your new IT guy can't do, because you got rid of somebody who knew how to do it, you would see that nobody's attending, nobody. So I would strongly suggest to this board that that's the tragedy tonight, that you have no public participation anymore, and no involvement. And until you get people involved and start doing stuff that's important to residents of the community, you have to understand, community development block grant money is given to the city because you have areas of blight. There's blight, there's blight that's supposed to be fixed. But what this community does, like many other communities, you have these areas of blight, and you leave them blighted. It's like having a drug addict. So you never cured a drug addict, so every day he needs to get his drugs. Maybe you need to start working on the areas of blight and setting some goals in this city, and working with the folks from community development, and Mr. Warren, and other people that are involved in this community, instead of shutting them out, maybe figure out how to get somebody to put it on the screen, so you know what's going on here. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. B. Coker, 636 Southeast Bayard Drive. So I just have a couple of questions about the job creation. So the present, the presenter identified that there would be 43 new jobs created, so I would like to know if he could, or the council could, explain what job
There's blight, there's blight that's supposed to be fixed. But what this community does, like many other communities, you have these areas of blight, and you leave them blighted. It's like having a drug addict. So you never cured a drug addict, so every day he needs to get his drugs. Maybe you need to start working on the areas of blight and setting some goals in this city, and working with the folks from community development and Mr. Warren and other people that are involved in this community. Instead of shutting them out, maybe figure out how to get somebody to put it on the screen so you know what's going on here. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening. B. Coker, 636 Southeast Bayard Drive. So I just have a couple of questions about the job creation. So the president, the presenter identified that there would be 43 new jobs created. So I would like to know if he could, or the council could, explain what job components, what jobs would be created in the admin section, as well as possibly identify where those 43 jobs are projected to come from? And if there is a process in place to identify low and moderate income applicants that would benefit from that, from those jobs created?
I think he mentioned that it would be geared to that group. Could you answer that for us?
Yes, the jobs would come from Haco, the permanent jobs, the 43 jobs. They already are at the airport. They service the aviation industry, aviation refitting and maintenance and that kind of sort of thing. So it would be those kind of skilled jobs, and there would be training for those jobs. There is also a application process, so when they apply for the job, they are also applying for their LMI status. At the same time, it's a two-page survey, it's very simple. We make it as simple as we can on the citizens, so that that process seamless.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Now, that's 50% of the applicants will, or the people who get the jobs will have the low to moderate LMI at the time of being hired?
At the time of being hired, correct.
And then, follow up, what's the projected salary that would be provided to take them out? Can you answer that question? And this is just a last remark, removing drug dealers from communities also helps to eliminate blight.
I apologize, council members, I don't have the salary range. Wait, you know, actually, wait a minute. I might be speaking too soon. But I'm gonna hold you up, but I do have that. It's in your draft application, page 23, 24, these structural technicians, $18 an hour, and interiors technicians, $16 an hour.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the CDBG grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Trisham Mubert, thank you for allowing me to ask a question. Are these permanent positions?
Yes, they have to be permanent new positions.
So is there, I know permanent to me means forever, but in the world of economics, that's not the case. So is there a timeline, like the jobs have to be for at least two years, three years, five years?
We take a payroll one year after the project's been totally completed. So after about a two-year project, another year later, we take another payroll to make sure that the jobs are still there.
And there's no follow-up after that?
No, not just, there's no monitors, right?
Okay, so if there's an audit, you know, by the state, then yes, they would check it. But that's not guaranteed.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? That concludes the public comments. What action do we need to take?
At this point wants to discuss it. Your action item is later on the agenda, it's the last resolution.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no action to take now.
Okay. Any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I would have a question. The fire suppression system for the hangar, is that a high expansion foam system, or is that an A triple F system that we're looking at installing?
You're speaking Greek to me, I apologize. I know that what there is not the code. And in order for them to expand and build all the facilities they want, we have to build a brand-new two-code system for the whole building.
We don't know the type of system that's going to be installed.
I don't, I don't, another problem is that I don't. Economic development probably does, no, and can get that information to you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarifying question. So to follow up on what Ms. Mubert asked, so one year after completion, there's an audit, then two years, and then another one year? Was that a one-two-one?
There's a, there's a two-year project, and at the end, there's a payroll and an accounting of the jobs that are created to close the grant out. Then one year after that, there is a, another payroll, we pull a new payroll to see if the jobs are still there. Then in the future, the state could call for an audit and check again. So, I mean, that's at their discretion, if they want to audit that file, okay, for that grant.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So the 43 jobs is from our piece of the grant, and then the county's piece of the grant is another 43.
Correct.
So it's a total of 86, and of the 86, 43 of those total will be LMI-qualified individual and applicant.
Correct.
At a minimum. Is that, where do we get the number 43 for each of these? Is that from Haco?
It's from the grant, it's the minimum that we can pledge and get the amount of dollars. So for $1.5 million grant, the maximum grant, which we need, we have to pledge 43 jobs. And that works out to be $35,000 of grant per job. That's how it works. And so, and for example, if at the end of all things, they only created 42 jobs or 41 jobs, they would owe us back $35,000 per job not created. Okay?
Haco would owe that back.
That, that, Haco.
Okay, and going farther with that same line of reasoning, so is it possible that this grant, in your discussions with them, it said you had a site visit, that they would create more than that number of jobs?
The total projected created jobs is 200 to 300. I know there's a more accurate number than that, but I know it's between 200 and 300.
So in our discussions with them that you had, is there any commitment on the other jobs at 200 to 300 is a lot bigger number than the 86, that they would be focused on LMI, or is it only the 86?
We are actually planning to come back and look at the other hangars and do this again, if we can do it again. And we've got to see if we can do this, this partnership that we're doing, the interlocal between, so the city is a partner, the county's a partner, Haco's a partner, airport's a partner. And so, this is a little different, okay? But if this goes through, then we may be doing another phase and looking at two more hangars and doing the same thing, okay? The only problem, only problem is, is we've got other grant dollars in hangar four, because we have a lot of structural problems with that building. Okay, so we have to treat it differently.
So with that, this first part, us and the county, the two hangars, could create up to 300 jobs?
Yeah.
200 to 300?
I'm, I don't want to say it, I don't want to commit to that, I think it's 200 to 300 overall.
Okay.
200 to 300 overall. And there are, I think there's four hangars that we're trying to address.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I would have one more question. Sorry. And I don't know that you're gonna be able to answer, but once the fire, if we're approved for the grant and the fire protection system's installed, from that point forward, whose responsibility is it to maintain that fire suppression system?
It will be the city. The city owns the airport and operates the airport and is responsible for the building. So it would be, they would be city assets.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we conclude the public hearing, we'll move on. Amendment, approval of the agenda, we do have a walk on items, a purchase of some pipes that will be addressed, I'd like to put it on item 13, with that amendment, is our motion to approve the agenda.
Let's go move with the amendment.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda is amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Taking the agenda, person's wishing to address council, Mr. Brandon Colbert was here, he had a three-page letter that he presented to me, and I told him that I would give it to Ms. Sykes to copy and provide it to all council members, and he had his home contact number, and he said with that he was satisfied with his appearance tonight. Other than that, I have one person, that's Mr. Sylvester Warren.
Mr. Mayor, Sylvester Warren. Mr. Mayor, for a while, I've been trying to get a handle on, and it's very difficult, well, two things are very difficult. One, it's a very difficult process in dealing with people who's trying to start businesses in the community, and rehab their properties in the community, to get the right information when they're down, not dealing necessarily with Mr. Young, but some of the people in the office that deter them, either they don't know the information that they need to know, but there is a lot of frustration in the community about people not assisting them in ways they should, so they can be successful in starting their businesses. A lot of those conversations end with people being frustrated as if the people that they're communicating with who should know this information don't, and it's preventing them from being able to do the things they need to do, and it's very discouraging with these young entrepreneurs that's being created in our community. And so, I would like to see you, Mel, have someone to talk to someone to expedite processes like this, because I think it's a positive thing, especially in my community, get young entrepreneurs trying to get involved in the business community. That's one. Two, for the longest, I've been asking how much money's in the budget? Because I was the one who initiated, that put money in the budget to tear down abandoned houses and to clean up some blight. And since that, about almost two years ago, zero blight has been removed, zero lots have been cleaned, and zero houses have been abandoned. And I'm not understanding why we budgeting money and you're making promises to the community after we fussed that we need these things, and then it's money budgeted for it, but money isn't being spent on it. I mean, I don't, I mean, right by where I live, there's two or three abandoned houses. One guy named Greg Carter, he's gonna put over a hundred thousand dollars in a house, and it's an abandoned house right next to it, and you can't sell it, it's a beautiful house, nobody wants to buy it because of the blight right next to it. But I guess, maybe because it sits in a certain community, that there's no urgency and no priority to get these abandoned houses removed and to spend this money out of the budget. And you all can tell me that it's the process of the magistrate and all this, but I seen this system work. When they want to get something done, we get it done. But while we slow poke around and avoid getting real things done in the predominantly black community about housing and blight, I have the slightest idea.
What's that address for that? What street is the house you're talking about?
You got one on Aberdeen, you got two on Fronie. You got Montana, and it's a shame that the amount of investment that people are trying to remodel that community, that they are sticking money in these houses. And I'm personally upset that Greg Carter's put that type of money in that house, and his comps are not gonna come back because of that house that's sitting there, that we're playing games because of either showing favoritism, or we don't have the urgency to get this type of stuff done. It's, it's, it's... Thank you, Mel.
Okay. Anybody else wish, yes, there's somebody else, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This Glenn Biden again. I wanted to just follow up on, at the beginning of the public comment, you indicated you had a three-page letter from a citizen. I missed the name because I'm on the phone, but I guess my request is that it's three pages, the council members got it, I'm not in the city council meeting, so I assume it's not up on the screen. And it just seems to me, it's just my personal opinion, that as a citizen, I would like to know what that letter is. You know, you just, somebody read it into record. If you don't want to read, let Ms. Sykes read it, but I don't understand, I got this letter from this citizen, and you all got a copy of it, and we don't know as citizens what the letter's about. You know what I'm saying? It, it, the letter could be critical of me, could be critical of Mr. Warren, could be critical of the city. It just seemed not in line with the sunshine law, and I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not trying to put Mr. Colbert on the spot, but it just seems to me that if you're gonna introduce something at a council meeting, say, I got this letter, it's three pages, and the citizen's okay with me just giving to you all? Well, there's citizens who want to know what's in that letter. And the only way we're gonna know that, it got to be on the screen, someone need to read it. And that's disturbing to me, it's almost as if the citizen's been kept out of this loop. You know, if it's profanity laden, you can always block that out, but not to let the public know what this letter's about. Now, if you hadn't brought it up, that'd be a different story, but you actually mentioned the fact that you got this letter, council been provided with it, and I'm at home trying to figure out, okay, what's in this letter? I hope that makes sense, because it's frustrating to me, as a citizen and a pharmacist councilman and a former person who worked for the Congress for 24 years, I don't understand bringing up a letter and not even politicizing it, making it public on the screen. I attend the county commissioner meeting, doing a redistricting process, not redistrict, but doing the charter review process, and Attorney Joe Foma read every letter, every email he got. It took two or three hours to do it, but he did it. And I think that the citizens in this community deserve nothing less, that if you got a letter from someone, addressed to the city council, and you or somebody bring it up and say, I've provided it to the council member, as if the letter was just for the council, well, once you bring it up in the city council meeting, it's for the public to know, so I would like for you to consider at least reading the letter, or have somebody else to read it, because I don't think it's fair to those of us who are trying to be conscientious and not to know what the letter's talking about. And I thank you so much for taking my call.
Okay, I don't know that we need to read it, it's from Mr. Colbert, who appeared at the last two workshops, and basically, I have not seen the letter, I just handed it from him to Ms. Sykes, and from what he told me, and I think Mr. Green was there, that is just a reiteration of what he said last Saturday, so it would be the same thing, he just put it in a letter form. And it is a public record, anybody wants a copy of it, get with Ms. Sykes, and I'm sure she can provide it.
Mr. Mayor, for a point of clarification, none of the council members, to include myself, have been provided a copy of the letter yet, as there was one copy that you received and gave to Ms. Sykes. And secondly, I would reiterate, it is a public record, and any citizen of the public can view that letter. And so, yeah.
Okay, anybody else wish to address council? Okay, no old business? Yes. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Betty Jefferson, I reside at 721 Northeast Santa Avenue, and I want to speak back to that, that Sylvester was talking about, the greenhouse on Aberdeen, the house is not for sale, the guy bought the house, and the house next door to it belongs to a gentleman, they got it boarded up, but they need to know the rules when it come to tearing down these houses. You just can't come in and just tear somebody's house down. So you all need to make them aware of the process that it takes to get these old houses tore down. The houses that he's picking on is the ones over on the east side. There's a lot more worse houses on the west side, I don't know why he hadn't seen those. He's over there all the time, snooping around, so I don't know why he hadn't seen those or brought those up, rather than just trying to pick the ones on the east side.
See, I'm gonna respond, she brought my name up in this whole thing, so... I don't need you standing around me, you can go ahead, if you're done, I'm done.
I might need to respond to what you guys say.
Will you? Ms. Mayor, she can take a seat and come back and respond to whatever I have. I don't need you standing over me.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'm trying to be civil, right? Not in here, calling people out, using this opportunity as a bully-poor-pit to say things that she disagree with about things that I'm pointing out in this district. If people care, if she so cared about the process... If people care, if she so cared about the process, her husband's a councilman in that district, they never held a town hall meeting, which they have the ability to do as elected officials in that district. They've never communicated, or tried to communicate what the process was, have been very hindrance toward the process in many ways. And Mr. Mayor, let me also say this, remember, it was me and different citizens who brought the issue about blight and to put the money in the budget to remove these type of houses and clean up these type of lots. You remember the fight that we had about all this, correct? Also, Mr. Mayor, let me remind you that she don't know nothing about Greg Carter, because Greg Carter has my girlfriend, who is a now broker, doing a comp on the house, and he's listening with her to be so. So when people come up here with misinformation and not knowing all the questions and not knowing all the answers, all it do is mislead the public. And so if you don't know what you're talking about, it's best to just stay seated and stay out of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, okay, wait.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're gonna move along. New business, we have city council ordinance number 2021 dash 2184 on first reading. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
An ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida pursuant to petition number ANX 20-03 relating to voluntary annexation, making findings, annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, into the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date period.
Is there a motion as a city council ordinance number 2021 dash 2184?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve city council ordinance number 2021 dash 2184.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion by counsel? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, we're going into resolutions, city council resolution 2021 dash 066. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the CARES Act sub-recipient agreement between Columbia County and City of Lake City, Florida, a sub-award of $913,710 and 0 cents for certain expenses incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, and providing an effective date, period.
Is there a motion out of city council resolution 2021 dash 066?
Mr. Mayor, I would approve a resolution number 2021 dash 066. Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion by counsel? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, the city council resolution 2021 dash 072. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration's Air Nautical Services Group to provide digital notices to airmen, providing for the execution of a letter of agreement with the air traffic control tower manager to provide digital notices to airmen, providing for severability, and providing an effective date, period.
Okay, is there a motion out of city council resolution 2021 dash 072?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, city council resolution, resolution 2021 dash 072.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, we, we met, the airport committee met on this one day last week, and I think it's a good idea to, for this resolution to, to pass.
Same thing, yes. Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, we're out of six, city council resolution 2021 dash 073. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council authorizing the execution and renewal of a cooperative service agreement with the CDS Family and Behavioral Health Services Incorporated, providing for coordination, referral, and effective service delivery of counseling, case management, and prevention services to clients and their families, and providing for an effective date, period.
Is there a motion as the city council resolution 2021 dash 073?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number 2021 dash 073.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion by counsel? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson, do you have something? Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, the city council resolution 2021 dash 074. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between Swanee River Water Management District and the City of Lake City, providing for an extension to the contract end date and providing for an effective date, period.
Okay, is there a motion as the city council resolution 2021 dash 074?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of resolution 2021 dash 074.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, the city council resolution 2021 dash 075. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a contract with Career Source Florida Crown, providing for the implementation of a program titled, quote, "Summer Youth Employment Program," end quote, to include training and employment opportunities with the city between June 14, 2021, and August 2, 2021, and providing for an effective date, period.
Is there a motion as the city council resolution 2021 dash 075?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of a resolution, number 2021 dash 075.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment to make. I'm actually on the board of the Florida Crown, Career Source Florida Crown Workforce Board. I did discuss it with the city attorney, I do not have a conflict, but I just wanted to bring it up, that that is the case.
Okay. I think it's a good program, I think it helps to ease and get some, some experience. Ms. Sykes, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Out of nine, the city council resolution 2021 dash 076. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, accepting a bid from Anderson Columbia Company Incorporated related to the annual supply of asphalt, providing for the award of an annual asphalt supply contract, providing for the execution of the annual asphalt supply contract, and providing an effective date, period.
Is there a motion as the city council resolution 21, 2021 dash 076?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of resolution 2021 dash 076.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. City council resolution 2021 dash 077. Mr. Cervelis, do you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, ratifying the mayor's extension of the state of emergency arising from the COVID-19 public health emergency, period.
Is there a motion as the city council resolution 2021 dash 077?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number 2021 dash 077.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Then we have city council resolution 2021 dash 078. Mr. Cervelis, would you read that by title?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing an application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for approval of the Lake City Community Development Block Ramp, providing for fire suppression improvements of hangars three and five at the Lake City Gateway Airport, providing for the execution of an inter-local agreement with Columbia County, Florida, for the administration and construction of the fire suppression improvements, and providing an effective date, period.
Okay, is there a motion as the city council resolution 2021 dash 078?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of city council resolution number 2021 dash 078.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Then we have a discussion, possible action on meetings, but let's go ahead and do the per, the walk-on item of purchase of the pipe, and then we can get back to where we want to do the meetings. Mr. Helfenberger, would you talk about the purchase of the pipes and why we're having that walked on?
Okay, we had, this is an emergency situation, we had extensive discussion at the Utility Advisory Committee about it. We've been having problems getting a pipe for, in this case, we're looking at sewer pipe for about $97,000, due to the lack of availability, escalating costs, and the need for emergency repairs for, for residents when they have sewer problems. This will have an adequate supply to get us by for, for the foreseeable future until hopefully we get out of this situation where we have a very hard time getting supplies and getting them on time for projects. This will basically handle what the normal activities would be for our utility department, and I strongly recommend we go ahead with this. The cost of this seems to continually escalate too, and it, the person who had the price for this is holding it because he had bought it at a lower price. So I think this, I consider this an emergency because we absolutely have to have materials to do emergency repairs, and we've had a lot of delays and lack of availability when we try to get supplies recently with this COVID economy.
Any questions by counsel? I don't think that anything's gonna go any cheaper than it is today for a while. And then if we make a motion, we need to say that it is an emergency, is that correct, Mr. Cervelis?
Yes, Your Honor, you could adopt the representations of the city manager as the reasons for the emergency.
Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation of the city manager?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, any further discussion? And you did state that with it.
With the emergency, yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Sykes, we call the roll.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, we'll get to the last item, is discussion, possible action, meeting and location, what's the pleasure of counsel? I think, Mr. Helfenberger has recommended we go to the second meeting in June, is that correct?
Yes, I'd recommend that you, we would then return to the city hall for, for all future city council meetings at that time, unless there'd be a meeting where you anticipate a very large turnout, which we could come back to this building for that, if that were the case, and that all committee meetings would be at the city council chambers. We are set up there to handle it without having to rent additional equipment or to do extra processes to be able to hold the meetings and record them. I would also ask that the city consider transitioning from the virtual meetings to live streaming with YouTube for all city council meetings, and that we would go ahead and record the committee meetings, but without the live streaming. Citizens have, a lot of them have come back to attend the city council meetings in person. I think especially like when you have a public hearing, if you have somebody in attendance, you don't risk having a signal cut off, and it just keeps it very clear as far as, you know, having the testimony from people for, for hearings especially. You could watch these meetings basically unlimited times, the service is free. Currently, I anticipate that we would be spending, if we would continue with the Zoom and Cisco Webex as a backup, and have the staff involved, would spend about $16,419 a year. It's more the, it'd take up a lot of staff time that could otherwise be used for, for taking care of, making sure that the IT system runs smoothly for the whole city in, in carrying out their services to the public. There are another, number of other meetings, and if we would go outside of city hall, a lot of times we have to rent equipment, and there's a, there's a further cost to that. You know, all, again, all live stream YouTube meetings would be recorded and available on YouTube for unlimited viewing.
Is that, and that's the way the county's doing theirs at this present time?
That's the way the county does theirs right now, and it seems to be working very well for Columbia County.
Mr. Helfenberger, on the live stream now, it's live as we have the meeting, other than the committee meetings?
Yes.
And then the committee meetings, when would they be available to the public?
Well, Adam would be able to probably answer that. Would it be the next day, or? Okay, so the, the next day, we could have it on, on the website available for them? Okay.
Is there a cost differential to the live as opposed to uploading later? Or is that just like employee costs that we're looking at, or?
The, with the live, I think you'd still, you'd still have to be here, but you wouldn't have to worry about losing a connection, I think. You want to answer that further, Adam?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sampson had asked when a committee meeting would be posted. I know he said the next day, but if we have a committee meeting on a Friday, realistically, it would be Monday before that would be posted. Adam would not be in on a Saturday to post that, I just want to make sure that we take into account to holidays and weekends, whenever we say next day, it's usually next business day that we're open, to give Adam and his staff time, ample time to get that posted. Thank you.
Thank you. We hadn't done the committee meetings before, and we hadn't even done our city council meetings as far as that until this year, so it has given the community a little more access to these meetings and all, but I think we're getting back to normal, and I think most people that want to participate after we get through with this COVID deal will be at the meetings. But I, I agree with the city manager's plan.
Mr. Mayor, that's a good point. I know on the county meeting, for instance, there's been times where I've been listening to it on the YouTube Live and then came to the meeting to make comments, so I think it's good that that's available. I do think we got to remember where the public square is, I know a lot of people want to force it on into digital world, but even tonight, I had a hard time understanding Mr. Bowden from time to time, and I don't know, it was just audio or whatnot, but I think we need to make it available where people can see it, and I like that. The YouTube actually works really well, I watched the meeting I missed Saturday before last, multiple times, parts of it I watched four or five times, so I like that it's available there. To me, it's even a better spot than the Zoom, as far as the interaction, I think that's the one piece we have to determine. Do we want to continue having interaction with people outside the room into the room? Historically, that's not been the way governments run, but government's got to change with the time, and I'm not sure.
And, and whatever we do, it's not written in stone.
It'll always be changed.
We can always change it, we can always go either direction, but, and we do have the cost factors, and, and we don't want to jeopardize public access because of minimum cost, but we also have, da, 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 what's other? but we also have, but that is, what's other? I'd, I'd like to follow up with his recommendation, see how it goes, and see what the participation is, and if it, if we need to change it, we can always change it.
Me too. I, I, I would agree with the, uh, adopting the city manager's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a motion.
Second part of that, so when was it we were moving back to the city council?
Second meeting in June.
The second meeting in June, okay.
Yeah, they have time to, I guess, get everything transitioned. They had to get notice out to the public. They've kind of gotten used to us being here.
But if large hearings are coming up, then we could still utilize this building for a large meeting.
Correct.
And I know that we've already passed a resolution that we can hold a city council meeting, uh, within the county, uh, if, if we need, you know, other venues to hold capacity. Uh, I don't know if that's going to end with the COVID emergency. Uh, Mr. Curbeline maybe could speak to that.
I think that was a permanent change.
I think it was permanent that we could do it as long as we noticed it, if there was a need for a different venue. Sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Curbeline.
Okay, Mr. Green. Mr. Green, that was made permanent through ordinance two one, twenty-one dash two one seven eight, and, um, I believe it was also slightly revised to allow the city manager or the caller of the meeting to, um, determine the location. I can't find it, readily find it right now, so, but I can tell you that it has been made permanent, that the location may be changed.
Yes, sir. So, e- even with that, I, I would be fine, uh, to accept the city manager's, to adopt the city manager's recommendation.
And I want to say that I appreciate the school board being as accommodating as they have for this many months, and, you know, like us having it over at, uh, Richardson Middle School last Saturday and, uh, having it here, and our staff are being flexible and doing what they've done over this last year. Been a tough job, and, uh, uh, we appreciate that they, that it made it, that it was a lot harder for them, and they've done a good job. So, anybody else have anything, or we'll deal with that? Okay, Mr. Helfenberger, I think that's where we're at. And, uh, with that, we'll go to comments of council.
No questions?
Yes, sir. You just said you can accept it? You don't vote on it? It's just going to get changed? Just consensus tonight?
Make a decision.
I mean, first of all, this thing wasn't even put on the agenda. I'm looking at a memorandum here that stated May twelfth from the city manager that the only people that got it was the city council. So much for keeping the public involved, and I brought this up on Saturday. And the public has not been involved in this decision whatsoever. I understand you guys got elected to represent the people, but this is not wrong. You guys aren't gods, so you have rules here. I mean, everybody got on the chief. Mr. Sampson got on the chief that the stuff wasn't ready, that she didn't have backup material. Yet you guys come here tonight, Mr. Sampson and the rest of you, nobody gets a free pass, and you want to adopt this thing on, on, on a say-so, but it's not good when the chief just shows up with no information? How is that fair to the public or fair to the chief? I mean, I, I don't get that. Now, I called the county this afternoon. I don't know if anybody here called the county, and the county doesn't, obviously, there's a lot of people don't hold the city in high regard these days, because if you look at who's attending the meeting tonight, nobody. You got a house full of staff people and some regulars who are my friends. I've known that for a long time, they're involved. But if you look around the room, who's here from Lake City? And that's why that's not on the screen. Just the boat right could put it on the screen. Was he told not to put it on the screen? Does anybody know? Or he just does what he wants? The girl could put it on the screen, but the boy can't. Goes to show you something, huh? And as far as staff, you say it costs more. Well, now, he is the director of IT. I will get that email eventually if we can get a public record sent out, or I'll just sue you guys for it. I understand that HR sent out a thing that said he's the IT director. Period, endo. Now, an IT director gets paid a salary. He's here by himself. So, to say that this costs the citizens of, of, of Lake City extra money is baloney. You sat here for a year and watched Mandy Man do these meetings. She, she never got extra money. You might take a little bit of time off, but she didn't get paid extra. Now, all of a sudden, the city manager comes up with some sort of bogus budget that this is going to cost extra money. Saturday, now, the other thing too, because I called the, this, the county this afternoon and says, how do you do it? Because I knew how they did it, but I just wanted to make sure. When they put those meetings on and they're live streamed, this is not this bull crap that goes on in Lake City where it sits on, on Mr. Boatwright's computer for two days. The meeting from Saturday, when I checked before, still wasn't on the city website. The county streams those live to YouTube. Sometimes, when I get back to my office in the evening after a s- 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 county commission meeting, that's on YouTube. Two days, this is twice Mr. Boatwright hasn't been able to put these meetings on. Now, Saturday, there was this pow-wow that you guys had in the front of the room. Mister, Mister, the city attorney who appears to be running the city right now, and, and, and the clerk and the city manager discussing this memorandum and his plans. And I'd like to know why you weren't there, Your Honor. There's no elected official involved in, in planning these meetings. In the county, and when you go through all the counties, it's either the county chairman or the city mayor or somebody is involved in the planning of these agendas. Yet this came on tonight, and you snuck this on like thieves in the night. Okay. And that's just wrong, and, and this city is going downhill. I've never seen it this bad. I'm going to tell you something, and this is my last comment, that nobody else has seen it this bad either. People are laughing about this place the way it's being run right now. All right.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, uh, following public comment, I would like to make a motion, a formal motion, that we adopt the city manager's recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Ma- Mayor?
Yes.
The city manager has received direction. The location of the meeting will be changed by resolution, which is the standard procedure in the city council's rules. Uh, going back just a moment while I have the floor, the regular special meetings shall be held in the city council chambers. This goes back to Mr. Green's question, and the, the hour and the time may be changed by the caller of a special meeting. So, that's how we handle special meetings and regular meetings. As far as changing the location back to the city council chambers, not post-COVID-19, but at this day and age, it'll come back at the next meeting with a resolution.
Okay.
And that would also include, uh, changing the, uh, whether we adopt the YouTube livestream or WebEx or Zoom?
It can certainly be that descriptive. It does not have to be that descriptive. I would not, I would, I'll let Mr. Boatwright speak to this if he needs to, but I would not tell the administration which platform to use for the sake of something may happen next week in the world of IT.
And to put it in a resolution where it's like, okay, so we'll vote next meeting. That's one reason to go to the second meeting.
So, but I, I just want to be clear. The rea- the reason that the platform is important is it's not the platform that we're using. What's important is that the, uh, public, uh, has to be informed that they're coming back in person. They can, it's one thing to view something online, it's something else to participate online.
Right.
And we're participating online because of the COVID emergency. And so, uh, the public needs to, we need to make sure that the public is aware that if their partici- participation is going to be required in person, we need to make sure that they understand that if we're changing, uh, a platform.
Mr. Green, I think that the different, uh, what, what I hear you saying is the difference between attendance and participation, and that anyone will be able to attend remotely. In order to participate, they will need to be in person. Is that accurate?
Correct.
That will be in our notice.
That will be in the resolution, yes, sir.
Okay.
The, the, what type of platform to attend remotely, we'll leave that up to the administration's decision.
So, we'll have something to vote on in writing?
Yes.
Comments?
I have a question on that. So, the state of emergency ends at what point? Is it July one?
Well, at the moment, I believe it's, uh, the latter part of June, uh, according to the governor's most recent order.
So, would we not keep remote participation, I think, through the end of whenever that period of emergency is? And then go back to requiring attendance for, uh, in person for participation?
I think that would be prudent. It's, Mr. Mayor, with, with the explanation from the attorney, then I would withdraw my motion, knowing that this is going to come back in a resolution format.
Okay. So, it'll be a resolution, and then, Mr. Sampson, are you recommending that we go to the first meeting in July?
Whatever term that falls outside of the state mandated emergency.
Currently, it does happen to be the first in July, but we understand Mr. Sampson's, um, comments, and of course, the governor could change the, um...
Any day.
Any head. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a, another comment. I mean, we're getting done too quick, so maybe a comment or two will be good. So, I thought we had good turnout at the workshop Saturday, and I think we need to move timely on the subject at hand. Hopefully, in the near term, we'll be able to get something done there. In addition to that, um, there's some other items that I think we should look into that I've asked for some help on, specifically on ship funds and how it would play with affordable housing and repair. I know the county is getting our share of the funds currently. I've asked Mr. Helfenberger to look in to see, um, you know, just prelimin- like, in the preliminary, um, steps, what would it take for us to get those funds that administer them if we could target them within the city? The city has a right to do that. I don't know that we want to do that. It's, this is just the beginning stages, but it would give us a little bit more ability to target those funds. Um, another item, I think we should go ahead and have the application process worked out. How do we want to do affordable housing with the, um, repair, remodeling, getting rid of blight? There's a lot of steps with that. If we complete the Wilson Park CDBG grant anytime soon and we want to move on to the next one, because the, the only limitation we have on that is the completion of that grant. So, once that's done, if we want to move on, if we already had in place a structure for the application and go ahead and start taking applications, so we have a line, so people, we would know already if people would qualify. I know Ms. Johnson mentioned that we could do up to sixteen houses. I think we could do quite a few more, depending on how we do it. But if we go ahead and get people in line and start getting buzz on it, go ahead and get the plan in place, so that by the time we get the funds, we're not beginning then. I think that'll help with our application process as well. We'll go ahead and get points for having that and for being prepared to spend the funds. Um, I just think that's something we should be cognizant of and be proactive and not reactive, because I think every one of our districts, we have homes that would qualify, and if we could go ahead and identify these homeowners that are interested, you know, so we could go ahead and make the criteria and get it in place for applications.
Well, another thing is, I mean, there's things we've got to do, but there's things the public has to do to qualify, and if we could get some guidance on that, so we could get the word out to them of what they need to do to be ready to apply. In other words, if we say we want applications, but they're not ready to do it, then that could cause some of them to do it. So, if we could get a, something that would inform them of what qualifies for those things. But I agree with you. Let's get proactive and, and start moving in that direction and see what we want to do and how the best use of funds. As far as the ship money, I'd like us to look into it and see, I don't know how much the administration part of it is, or if we could just have some say-so or guidance, but I'd like us to find that out too.
And it could even be that we could use, they, the county, I believe, used Swanee River Economic Council. It could be we could do the same thing, but we would just have some input on where it's, where it goes. Instead of just saying, hey, if I'm buying a house in the county, that, that's where the funds go. We want to make sure that the city's getting their share of the funds.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know, and I don't know, maybe we are, but it could be all of our funds are going out to fund new communities outside, in which case, you know, we're missing the boat. Let's use some of the funds already available. That's not reinventing the wheel, and there's already a program for what Ms. Johnson mentioned, the weatherization, the repairs. But where's that money going? I can't tell you.
Or even if they stay in control of it, you'll say at least so much of it needs to be allocated.
Allocated to, uh, to the city.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, and I would just remind the council, I know that when we pass lean amnesty, uh, on this very topic, uh, I know that we set a timeframe when, uh, the administration would get back with us just to kind of update us, kind of let us know are people taking advantage of the lean amnesty, uh, program, uh, as a measure. So, I just would remind, uh, the council members, uh, we do have that out there as well, and, um, to make sure that we're, uh, that's not lost in the conversation.
Anyseas? Scott, thank y'all for coming. We'll be adjourned.